Moline Police Department. And also Mayor's Reappointment of Pilford Flowers for the Board of Fire Base Commission for a three-year term to expire May thirty-first, twenty-two. Mr. Flowers. Any questions? During that, we move to our presentation, the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five Snow Angels Program Awards.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk a bit about the Snow Angels Program. This is our first year to do the program. If you may recall, eighteen more problems. The problems were rediscovered during the large snow event back in twenty-four. We saw numerous sidewalks that were not shoveled, built in the community. So we heard back from the community residents that there were legitimate reasons why those sidewalks were not shoveled. Could have been age, mobility issues, but definitely, you know, simple access of showing on a sidewalk was a risk to some people and they would have had safety issues as well. Staff-wise, we tried to come up with a creative solution. We researched to see if there's any other communities that had similar problems. We didn't see a lot. So we did eventually find that the Snow Angels Program, which eventually took place here in Moline. So at that point, I worked with my business analyst, Adela Rossow. She was a great help to it, creating the program. She talked to the communities, figured out how challenging they might have had or options where we could have. Without Adela, I don't think the program would be what it is. She did an amazing job from start to finish. I'm so really grateful for her program efforts. So once we got the program in place, we decided, well, we need people actually for the program. We need to have people who can need and also volunteers and people who can. So I would say, we had like five people to help the program. We ended up with twenty residents who we helped with the program. So I was very happy to have that. Volunteer-wise too, very grateful for the volunteers. There were some, let's say, medical temperatures. It was snowing out. Not great condition to shovel, but they came out. Really did a service for people they never met, so. So that type of dedication was very appreciated. But to add just one to thank all of us in Moline, I felt that obviously I wanted to show them and give them a sort of appreciation. Also recognize them before the mayor and city council. So I'll start maybe in the Snow Angels, if you want to start coming up, if you're here. First would be Ashley DeNolce. All the persons in here. Megan Baker. Axe Aberland. Chris Mathias. Christina Miller. Michael O'Brien. Thomas Reed. Adela Russell. Uh, myself.
Thank you so much. First, a big thank you to everyone who was recognized this evening. It's really great to remind the community of the quality of our staff and not just here to work for us. They're all teammates. So many things. I guess things now. Alright, our next items are proclamations. A proclamation request by Stephanie Murphy, City Clerk, to declare the week of May fourth through ten, two thousand and twenty-five as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And the proclamation reads, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Sanita Rye-Puddy, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the week of May four through ten, two thousand and twenty-five, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. Thank you so much for all that you do. Our next item is a proclamation request by Darren Goll, Chief of Police, to observe the week of May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Police Week. Do you want to say anything?
Oh, Your Honor, I appreciate you recognizing the.
Proclamation reads, whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. And whereas, established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, each day more than eight hundred thousand police officers across our country put on their badge and go to work knowing they may face extremely dangerous situations. With one hundred and sixty-five officers giving their lives in the line of duty last year. Whereas the men and women of the police, excuse me, of the Moline Police Department make difficult decisions every day to safeguard the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Moline and provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Sanita Rye-Puddy, Mayor of Moline, do hereby call upon all citizens of Moline and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May eleventh through seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Police Week. And finally, today, a proclamation request by Denver Schmidt, Director of Public Works, to observe the week of May eighteen through twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just appropriately. I wanted to mention, not only does the Public Works Department, but I will be umbrella term for Public Works. For utilities and engineering and parts of it.
Thank you so much. The proclamation reads, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and evolving of the people of Moline. And whereas, this infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals for our engineers, managers, and employees at all level of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Moline to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas, the year two thousand and twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Sanita Rye-Puddy, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim May eighteen through twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. Congratulations. Alright, do we have any questions on the agenda? Just a note that at the end, when we've adjourned, the administrator has requested that we take some pictures of the town hall and such. So be prepared for that before you head out. We move to our Committee of Bookhold Agenda Items nine point one, An Abortment Amendment, Chapter Twenty-two, Second Amendment to May is that the Moline Code of Abortments is by increasing the number of class A principles of backdoor dealers licenses in the city of Moline at the request of Moline Smoke Time LLC, doing business as Moline Smoke Time and Baker Shop due to a fire-related relocation. Mr. Bitas.
And Mayor and Council staff is like in the rural. Baker Shop, they're located at Seventh Street, Old. That's made it have a fire that must use small floor and say that in a place that we locate at Seventh. Is required that then we apply to.
Motion. I heard you. Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt, discussion.
In instances like this, do they have to pay fee for rehabilitation? Is that appropriate? Question for another time.
Question for another time, but it's a good question.
Yes, Inspector.
Reissuing the same license in the different locations, right? So your location, which is already worn out, the new business, that location paying for another license?
No, they do not transfer. Is there another hand? Hearing none? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Were we able to waive the fee?
So able to do that, I think, report that, that's a good question.
I think motion, uh, you do have the authority to waive the fees. That's not a problem. You can even do it as part of this particular action because it's still part of the same agenda item, which is authorizing the new location.
I would make it interesting to waive the fee for it.
Okay.
And by Schmidt, seconded by Timian, came around. Discussion? This just receives.
Do they apply usually at the same time every year?
There's a renewal period. I'm not sure for our practical license is one that is. What your license will be known as subsequent period. They just renewed.
So what would it do to the calendar year? Also, it means hundred dollars in dollars or whatever. We made the recent.
Well, it's, it's a new license now.
Also, it's a super since everything else.
Right, because licenses are not for those.
Alright. Mr. Schmidt.
I would say, this is a business that had a fire, but it already won't be able to, it is pretty vulnerable, it's a, being part of money, right?
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Oh, sorry, that amendment passes. Now we vote on the motion as amendment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Nine point two, resolution declaring vehicles as shown on Exhibit A attached to Tier Two and incorporated herein by reference as surplus property and authorizing the disposal of said vehicles by the Assistant Director of Public Works through the legal disposal process that is most advantageous to the city, whether sealed, bid, auction, negotiation, or otherwise.
Their council staff is putting school, old houses, their equipment, second one. So plus, uh, all.
Anything further to add?
Would you vote?
Alright, I heard this. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch, discussion?
Besides for the question, so we are not selling it back. We are giving it back. Or we are selling it to the public, but we don't get it.
I can address that better than I think that we're good. There was an agreement with regards to at least one of the vehicles that requires that there be a process of counseling transaction for a sale where they can then purchase it. It's specified in the agreement for the use of that, that vehicle by the fire department. So we're doing this particular method of transferring it in order to comply with that agreement that the Senate arms. So I, I think that it is anticipated that they will be the ones who get the vehicle. But this process is necessary in order to comply with that contract.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Nine point three, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to licensing agreements with Ben River Brewing Company, the Atlas Collective LLC, Dead boats espresso, Graded, and La Marinos drink for use of public driveway for outdoor dining from May seven, two thousand and twenty-five, through November fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five. I got CS over here for a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I move four, resolution authorizing use of city-owned property to the United States Army Corps of Engineers Rock Island District and its representatives in conjunction with the Small Boat Harbor Mississippi River at Moline, Illinois marquee harbor dredging operation. And authorizing the city attorney to execute an attorney's certification of real estate availability for the dredging and temporary storage of dredging material. And authorizing the mayor and city attorney to execute an authorization for entry for construction and attorney's certificate of authority to support maintenance dredging of the Small Boat Harbor Mississippi River at Moline, Illinois marquee harbor dredging operation.
Alright.
Good.
He's headed this way.
Go ahead. Yeah, so this is a very unique project because it's in ten percent, here's the Army Corps, but the mayor's just put this in their budget and actually got approved. So ten percent of the one Mississippi River, which owns it in Moline, was one. This is about a five hundred thousand dollar project that they are covering. The only cost that we have is the disposal of material dredge. Which, when I reached out to the landfill, it was between a hundred and ten thousand and a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and and the per ton cost, after realizing that, okay, when I come to city council for that, I came up with the idea of using bridge points to let the material dry out. Once it's dry, we can use it for fill. Last thought of the area was to dredge to this capacity, the material after the drive is split down in carts. So it, as you know, plans for grass with bridge point, as you hear, parts of that we just.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Rosat.
Will there be a snow?
There'll be a slight snow, but speaking with the Army Corps of Engineers, they're, they dredge Rock Island, Lockfall in the spring. They look right next to the light house as well. And speaking with their city settlers, also talked to Barry about Pito dredging project in one of its previous cities, and they actually created a river there, is that correct? And there was.
And worse comes to worse, we know we've managed some things like the elevator garden of the Chumier property, with the sign that says help people with what's going on. That might not be a bad idea.
So it's not gonna be huge. It's only about three, three and a half feet tall because there's gonna be jersey barriers to go around it, kind of keep it in within the. Yeah, so then come beginning of August, they'll remove those jersey barriers, we can pile it back up. This project has to be done before their end of their budget year, which is August. We want to get started as soon as possible, early next week to get it done before it kind of kick off the bulk, which is one point. Seven to ten. So I was talking to a contractor with the city in the past. He said that if we were to put in structural weapons in the urban plan, or you could put the dredging material back in for the longer term to change the grade. Just putting it out there, if there are other uses for the dredging material, that's possible. Absolutely. Once, once it's on our property, it's on.
The plan, the plan is to keep it outside if we can. Engineering plans could be developed and improved, but this is material that.
They're, they're gonna dredge it, or they're gonna barge it down the river. And the path, some of it has come off the charts, and we've had the science, street shooters and stuff, so overall, it's just gonna be a lot easier.
Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Nine point five, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to the school police liaison officer driven between the city of Moline and the Board of Education of Moline, Valley School District. Reporting setting for the terms for assignment, four police liaison officers to school schools for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school. Chief.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. You've seen this before. We do this every year. Story's our program in Moline has existed with collaboration in Moline, the life of the Nineties. Exactly, for the next calendar year. It's already been approved by the story care board of education.
Schmidt, seconded by Finch, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bitas, the May two thousand and twenty-five status and information.
Mayor, the council, state's information board, prepared by our, to be approved on all purpose that is in the city. Not like any month, it always has, always been present, always advancing, different programs. Paper will not fall out of the internet, or want to take the pollution phase one. Obviously, if you're important, you know. This got the topic, and we are, we've not asked him, and we're not asked. They know it's some of the issues that they're, speeding. Things that's finding their way, especially. The river cutting, if we're able to make it, this is from the city or the track, and the engineering department and all of this that under got completed. And it's now all good, it's a trail. It's an example of where the city would go, and now we're the first trail which we cannot tell. Quite a, quite a magnificent achievement. Of course, we finished with learning all about this, with the new fire station, that's on Seventh Street. With it, and titles of it, important sales there, going forward, discussion, corporate label, the fire, the security. We did the robbery, we got fifteen three dealership, the seven hundred, which was the little blue manufacturing office, at the time. Building station, a storage bank, and was a point four apartment. Thanks goes with that, the building, we got the whole in. This could be watched, the fire that's seven, seven pattern. It's created quite an interesting traffic route, trying to get the bikes, I use the others. Unless they deliver the trucks and the. But yeah, that's, that's actually, we discussed it quite well. And then, of course, the demolition that was on the program, was the old one. The old slur we knew that made true about tornado last year. I didn't know we were going to have a door, and I think that probably everything essentially would copy of what the design schematic is for landscaping. And bring that up, because that's just a sample of the vision, of what, kind of, forward, if we look at other properties in the law. Or that. What can't be possibly assumed, we're done with that project, will be done in ten, or possibly expected to be done. Rating it up, proposing that, 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 every building's, or any of the projects, would that. One for everyone.
Oh, and bringing up those spaces, apparently you may not have water, conservation, and life, and other environmental, sound, and materials. We just putting.
Neptus, 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 I insist, on that. Their, their drawings is that, that is.
Probably be worth it to connect with the, I'm getting the name of the committee wrong.
Fire else is.
Well, maybe them, but also the two, two city homes.
What we say.
Just because there's a synchrony, synchrony there, but it's.
Yeah.
Or synergy, yes.
And we haven't, we haven't started, I know we got no fire in these plants.
Now we're gonna try to do a world, if it's possible, so again, we're gonna try to market it with the.
That's great. I just wanted to know, we weren't just randomly deciding to put stuff in there that had a purpose.
Yeah, definitely. Or put it this way, it's.
Well, I mean, those are the kinds of things that also are traffic calming too, if you put them in the right places, all the back during the ice cup, so. And wants to forget to do. Any other questions from the council? Alright, well, close out that meeting, call a regular conference on the card, budget release please. Budget release.
Well, and today's America. I would just say, I mean, that, it is slow, liberating.
Okay, I want to see it. All please? Timian, Finch, Castro. Meetings in the group, three in the whole, six, twenty twenty-five, I consent agenda, I was two point one, eighteen point two, and nineteen point after next. Motion, I finish second by Castro. All the person, CS, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro, Schmidt. Carries, now consent agenda resolutions. Item number twenty-one point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an test to a project, number fifty. Project number fourteen ninety-eight, twenty twenty-five, really nice, a lot. Finch, seconded by the CS, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. All the person, Masia, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro, Schmidt. Seven ninety donations that motion carries. Item number twenty-one point two, a resolution authorizing the IT manager to accept and execute both on the purchase of a paper conversion data storage and virtualization system with new tanics from CBWG for the amount of two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-two cents. And authorizing the IT manager and staff to do all things necessary to complete the system purchase and implementation. Motion approved? Motion by Finch, seconded by Rosat, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. All the person, Masia, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro, Schmidt. Seven ninety donations that motion carries. Item number twenty-one point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an test to licensing agreements with Ben River Brewing Company, the Atlas, the LLC, Ben Collins Espresso, and La Marinos for use of public driveway for outdoor dining from May seven, two thousand and twenty-five, through November fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five. Motion to approve, I. Red Finch, seconded by Castro, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. All the person, Masia, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro. Hearing none, roll call please. Other person, Ms. Yeas, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro. Seven ninety donates, that motion carries. Item number twenty one point four, resolution authorizing the city property to the United States Army Corps of Engineers, Rockland District. And its representatives, in conjunction with the small boat harbor, Mississippi River at Moline, Illinois, harbor dredging operation. Authorizing the city attorney to execute an attorney's certification of real estate availability for the dredging and temporary storage of dredging material. And authorizing the mayor and city attorney to execute an authorization for entry for construction and attorney certificate authority. To support maintenance dredging of the small boat harbor, Mississippi River at Moline, Illinois, for deeper dredging operation. Motion approved. Motion, Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please. Other person, Ms. Yeas, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro.
Aye.
Seven ninety donates, that motion carries. Item number twenty one point five, a resolution accepting the twenty twenty five balances on the ten minutes of fair housing choice from Moline, Illinois, Rockland, Illinois. Network Iowa, as the city's official, can I ask you affirmatively, furthering fair housing. Motion approved. By Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please. Other person, Ms. Yeas, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro. Six times one day, that motion carries. Now consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number twenty two point one, in order to submitting check for five amendments on the Molineville ordinances, section five dash one one zero one C. By increasing the number of video meeting terminal licensed establishments in the city. At the request of owner Josiah Lanton, Harold's Chicken and Sports Bar LLC, taking the Harold's Chicken and Sports Bar, or twenty five, and T Street, Moline. Motion to advance, seconded.
Second.
With Finch, seconded by Timian. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please. Other person, Ms. Yeas, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro. Seven ninety donates, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty two point two, in order to submitting chapter twenty four personnel, the Molineville ordinances, section twenty four dash two two zero three residency. Our revealing section twenty four, and then very, and enacting a new thereof, one new section, twenty four dash two two zero three, telling with the same subject matter. Motion to advance to second reading. Should my finish, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please. Other person, Ms. Yeas, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro. Seven ninety donates, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty two point three, in order to submitting chapter twenty two offenses miscellaneous of the Molineville ordinances. By increasing the number of classes, and critical to Molineville, like, in the city. At the request of Moline Smoke Time LLC, HBA, Moline Smoke Time in neighborhood, due to a file related relocation. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please. Other person, Ms. Yeas, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro. Seven ninety donates, motion to advance to second reading carries, that's all I have, thank you. I will adjourn us seeing ADA at this moment, and uh, again, I need to reopen a meeting.
Yeah, technically, uh, you would have to reopen a meeting.
So I need, so basically, numbers twenty five and twenty six, I need approval from my council to move them up here before the votes of office. Should I get a motion from them to do that?
Um, I, I think that you're going to have to have someone else presiding for this portion of the meetings, which you're being sworn in. Uh, so they would actually convene the meeting with all of you being sworn in, taking seats out in the audience and coming up out of being sworn in.
Correct, right.
Take your seat.
Oh, so we, so we want to stick to this, this, um, order, what you're saying.
Uh, because there's no action being taken, other than the going to office, it doesn't have to follow the these order, that's for, uh, action items only. And there are no action items changes, uh, for the.
So we're pressing with those in office. Uh, of those that are, uh, going to be sworn in and take seats in that front row right now, um. Start with the oath of office for.
Public.
Aye, Saneetha Ryan Huddy.
Having been duly elected to the office of mayor for the city of Moline, Illinois. Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Molineville ordinances.
And the Molineville ordinances.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the office of mayor for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to our other seven minutes. I think that was too fast.
It's almost three.
For you, I'm ready, please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, James Patrick Schmidt.
I, James Patrick Schmidt.
Having been duly elected to the office of Alderperson at Large.
Having been duly elected to the office of Alderperson at Large. Yes, ma'am.
And of all people.
I was not going to correct it at this spot.
So, you know, counsel. What should he sign this evening? Can we call that a scrimsur there and write an other person?
How did his name appear on the ballot?
My name is.
I, I think we'll need to have these corrected, or at least this one, if I don't have the others.
I'll swear him in as Alderperson at Large, and people come by and.
I think the swearing in can be done right now, with the right word said, and then you can just sign up a, uh, another, uh, copy. Like original, right, that has the correct wording, the correct title.
Okay, no problem. Take care of it. All right, please repeat that. I, James Patrick Schmidt.
I, James Patrick Schmidt.
Having been duly elected to the office of Alderperson at Large.
Having been duly elected to the office of Alderperson at Large.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Molineville ordinances.
And the Molineville code of ordinances.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderperson at Large.
Of the office of Alderperson at Large.
For the city of Moline.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my.
According to the best of my ability.
I don't remember that. Oh, no, we'll take care of it. All right, Mr. Masia. Um, the oath of office for newly elected ward two Alderperson, Alvaro Masias, for a four-year term. Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Alvaro Masias.
I, Alvaro Masias.
Having been duly appointed to the office of second ward Alderperson.
Having been duly appointed to the office of second ward Alderperson.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Molineville ordinances.
And the Molineville ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office, second ward Alderperson.
Of the office of second ward Alderperson.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Right, the oath of office for newly elected ward four Alderperson, Matt Timian, for a four-year term. Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me.
I, Matt Timian.
I, Matt Timian.
Having been duly appointed to the office of fourth ward Alderperson.
Having been duly appointed to the office of fourth ward Alderperson.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Molineville ordinances.
And the Molineville.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of fourth ward Alderperson, for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the office of fourth ward Alderperson, for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And finally, oath of office for newly elected ward six Alderperson, Daniel McNeil. Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me.
I, Daniel McNeil.
I, Daniel McNeil.
Having been duly appointed to the office of sixth ward Alderperson.
Having been duly appointed to the office of sixth ward Alderperson.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Molineville ordinances.
And the Molineville ordinances.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of sixth ward Alderperson.
Of the office of sixth ward Alderperson.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my.
According to the best of my ability.
Um, mayor, I think the swearing in is, is good as none, uh, but I think that when you have directed, um, uh, oaths for people assigned, that you should administer the oath again, on, to be absolutely assertive.
Thank you. All right, our call is council meeting to order. Uh, here at six forty six, roll call please. Other person, Ms. Yeas, Rosat, Timian, Finch, Castro. All right, uh, we're at miscellaneous business. I just have a quick report that today I attended with Mr. Fias and KJ Whitley, and a lot of other leaders from nonprofits and the health sector. Um, the positivity housing councils workshop, um, with some esteemed, um, professionals in the homelessness and the housing space. Um, of Los Angeles, it was a really good conversation, really good conversation at our table, we have couple ideas. To pass by you, um, and it's all having to do with the strategy that we're looking for in our housing plan, um, got some really good, uh, positive feedback on things we're already doing, like love, love, et cetera, in terms of knowing that that's making a difference and contributing to the overall success of, um, of these kinds of programs, and I'd say, as a whole, so, we keep on keeping on, that was a good meeting.
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. Bitas. Yeah.
All right, so, just wanted to kind of bring you up today, a few things that are going on. First of all, I think May thirteenth, Brian, if I'm not mistaken, is the big celebration for the grand opening of the Library Garden project, I hope, that all people, hopefully, will have a good delight today, so. Start to the new sort of garden, so that is coming up. Um, we are getting ready to release the solar, I think, working diligently. We're developing, um, some business locations, we came to it by, by the way, the council linked. Um, with the projects, the progress, counties, and municipalities here in Moline. And, uh, it's been a long haul, just to get some final rehab, uh, here. Share that, if you're still, you can see where that kind of, that actually goes. Uh, nothing will be approved, not until, obviously, but this would give us an opportunity to reach out to the solar, you know, the solar industry, those who are actually. Get some idea, uh, of what the cost, being based on the posts being recommended. Uh, you know, city costs directly, the structure of the solar projects. Uh, we could enter into a public private branch, basically, to repeat, that, that they, the solid developer, the cost of the project that we can start to hold at a time. Right now, we're going to get released, and that's all, we're buying, uh, some kind of bid made. Supposed to be, probably, thirty, forty-five days following that. And then we would spend the summer, on, I will be evaluating, all the controls, initiating, for transaction, I would play, for the act. Uh, structure, the estimated, of course, uh, permitting, well, already, uh, in twenty twenty six. So, uh, we're forward to sharing that information with you, uh, let's see that, I'll do this. Okay, and so, kind of a long haul, we're planning there. Uh, we also had, uh, looking, with the, uh, the main course, uh, staff members, led by, I don't know, works director, Mr. Schmidt, uh, named in our, he as well, who opened, who called our climate action plan, zero, according to us, the environmental sustainability plan. And their planning forward, that, uh, company, actually, to form, and try to, for us, in essence, what they'll be, actually, they'll be, they assess that, in Moline, related to. What we've already done, and what's being done, and what we knew, that comes forward with plans, with ideas, as to how we can increase our treatment of, of firing. So that should be coming as well, um, we did have a company that we're working with out of St. Louis, or, Jersey, uh, it's in city hall last week. Basically, it's the latest moving council chambers down. Basically, this relates to moving council chambers downstairs, the main, uh, features, the buildings, that you ship, ship staff around at some point in the future. So they were all last week, actually, creating a three D model of the entire building, and it, uh, I've seen some, uh, question, actually, that's a bad job, you're on, uh, on your, uh, sticks, and creating this model, which is, it'd be created out of slot, and it was comparatively accurate. Saying that we're looking at it, you know, it's great, but it's definitely. So, so major, major Lythi going on, the, uh, thank you for participating in our, uh, little survey, our pool, or, uh, little hole, trying to find a date for, uh, strategic planning. That seems to be the most difficult thing, trying to get a range right now, whole whole study, get our results, and try to fit everything into our, uh, team. Uh, budget adoption schedule, preparation, and, uh, so, those dates, I'll work on, but, uh, if that works, then we'll probably, we'll, we'll, uh, you know, it is, for, for all, uh, you, uh. You know, be, be there for better or, you know, be, be, first since the Saturday, you know, do something, you know. All.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any public comment left back there, chief? Okay, then, uh, we don't have executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, so, motion by Castro, seconded by Finch, all the paper. Motion asked, very, very, thank you.
Total time.